At this time, we'll do the roll call. Nancy Baker?
Here.
Connie Neal? Not here. Paul?
Paul's here.
Okay. Greg Cox? Casey Guthur? Carolyn Cowherd?
Here.
Joyce Edwards? Maggie Faulkner?
Here.
Vicky Green? Myrna? Myrna Harris?
Here.
Jette? Judy Johansson?
Here.
Michael Laverne?
Here.
Pat McGinnis?
Here.
Okay. Marc Pittman?
Here.
Judy Poe?
Here.
Mandy Stone?
Here.
Duncan Sumter?
Here.
Of course, Ed's not here, and Gerald Fines.
Here.
Okay. Okay. The next item on the agenda is public comment. We have three people that have signed up to speak. First up, Barry Short and Katie.
Hello, I'm Barry Short from Alexander County, and that's Katie sitting over there. We've had an interesting, I don't know, what's it been? A month, six weeks? It's been a while. And there are a couple of things. So, let me start with a comment to Christina Carter, because I believe she is on the 1915C Innovations Waiver Service Definition Committee. So, they're changing some service definition names on the Innovation Waiver, and they're taking away from the PC service definition and the in-home skill building, PC Personal Care Service Definition, and the in-home skill building, the Habilitated Service Definition. And they want to create one service definition, a blended service, so everybody quits chasing that 15-minute unit. So originally, the name was proposed as Integrated Supports, which just sort of, excuse me, my personal opinion, dumb, dumb, dumb. So, at the 1915C Stakeholder Group in Raleigh meeting last Friday, and there's another one tomorrow, which we'll be going to, and it's posted on my YouTube channel, they informed us that they've changed the name. So, now, PC and in-home skill building are services that are provided in the person's home or their family home. Residential supports would be for AFL or group homes. So the new name for this Integrated Supports is Community Living and Supports. Highly insulting. It's a home and community-based waiver. I do not understand why everybody is afraid to use the word "home." Why not call it Home Living and Community Supports? Community Living, being the name of this service definition, implies to me that that is your intent. It is your intent to only provide Katie community living. You're not interested in providing her home living, only community living. So that's the first thing. So Christina, as you're working with the other LME/MCOs on the service definition, you might want to put a little thought into that. Thank you. The next thing I want to talk about is the Backup Staffing Report. You know, this thing is a laugh riot, and you really ought to take a look at it and compare it to the previous one. Because, first of all, it only lists 27 IDD service providers, and I'm sure there are way more than that. On the previous report, there were 18,000 hours that were missed, that weren't billed, there was no backup staff. This report doesn't give you that total number, so I did the math for you. It's 15,000 hours that were not billed, one, two, three, four, five, in a six-month period of time. And then it's also interesting that on this, the original report that came out, it doesn't list a small miracle as a service provider. But on this report, it does list a small miracle as a provider. And they had 232 hours missed in July, none in August, none in September, none in October, none in October, I mean, November, and four in December. This previous report listed Skill Creations, and over the course of the six months, Skill Creations had 798 missed hours. But on this new report, Skill Creations isn't listed. Just saying, it's a little hard to get my figures straight. Now, on the IDD Dashboard Report, which we're not doing monthly anymore, apparently we're only going to do it quarterly because there's not much change in the numbers, we went from relative as provider in August of 2014 with 83 doing more than 40 hours, to the January report, 32 being more, doing more than 40 hours. Because everybody believes the waiver has a limit of 40 hours, and that's not true. So I want to talk about why some of us are having difficulty finding staff. Rick is going to just have a stroke. Here in Alexander County, Rick, part of the reason I can't find unrelated staff to work with Katie is because maybe some of them are the quality of the staff where there was a fire at the nursing home, and if it wasn't for the police and sheriffs showing up, all 27 residents probably would have died, or more of them would have been hurt. I don't know, one went to the hospital. But when the police and the sheriffs and the fire department showed up at the nursing home, 27 residents, there were supposed to be two staff present, but there was no staff present. One of them had gone to the store at 3:30 in the morning, and the other ran off when the police, the sheriff showed up. Later Sheriff Bowman explained that that person had an outstanding warrant. Boy, that's exactly the kind of staff I want in my home, working with my adult daughter. And then my second favorite story from Alexander County, again highlighting the fabulous pool of potential employees, would be this in-home worker, she was an in-home aide, and her boyfriend, they stole $200,000 worth of antiques while the worker was working with the woman, the boyfriend came in and stole stuff. So that's the quality of the employment pool in Alexander County. So when my provider tries to tell you that they can't locate staff, you should probably take my provider at their word. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jerry Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. She's always great about her requests. My concerns, a lot to do with public information today as one of them. The attorney got my request after I asked Brian if he could move up on the agenda five days in advance and give us a packet of information rather than having 48 hours in advance. I know he was a lot of smart people, but I just don't think 48 hours in advance is enough time to give anybody time to review what they've got on this agenda. And I would hope, even though the attorney brings out the legality of it, I think there's always leeway with the board. You can do a lot of things the law says you can't do in some way. So I think this is something that the board ought to consider for yourself, as much as for me and the public at large, that we need some time to have it in our hands and review it. Then, when we get to a meeting, you start handing out additional stuff that is not even on the 48 hours. So to me, I think there needs to be a deliberate way of doing this, just like our county commissioners. We give it five days in advance, and I think it's legit. I think we have time to review it, and, you know, sometimes we speak intelligence, and sometimes we don't. What do we got in advance or not? But anyway, it gives an opportunity. And, of course, I've overheard a lot of board members say, "I ain't even read it yet." So I think that would be something that I would ask y'all to consider for the public and your board members. The next thing is that I requested information regarding the lodging, the meals, the meeting room, miscellaneous registration, rent, stipend, and travel for the board. And I am just a little beside myself when it comes to this issue, because I spend all day here. When I hear one meeting in the executive, you go to the finance, you go to quality assurance, you go to the regular meeting, you hear the same thing three times. I think that we need to do something about that. Now, what I focused on was the dollars and cents. In 2013, $53,482.70 was spent on the items that I just listed. In 2014, it went up by $8,478.14, and you've got less board members than you've had before. You don't pay rent in 2014, according to what I got. Now, projections for 2015, you're already at $10,000 above what you did in 2013. In the projections of 2015, you got a smaller board, and you got some other things. So what I'd like to propose today for y'all to consider as board, that we have four meetings a year. Attorney might weigh in that and say the law says something different, but anyway. If we could have less board meetings and have the board meetings in a way that everybody is being able to hear the executive, the finance, and also the quality improvement, because when it gets to the regular meeting, it's so watered down. If I didn't see these on video, I wouldn't even know I was at the same meeting. I think every board should be well-informed of everything. Because executive meetings, they say a lot of things that you never hear in the regular. Quality improvement, the same way. This is all important to every board member, and I think we need to figure out a way to do this more efficient. Because, I tell you, it's almost embarrassing to me to attend three meetings and see the inefficiency of this board and the information that's actually getting to the board members. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jerry. Our next speaker is from the Henderson County Board of Social Services. Gary, is it Seigles?
Yes, I signed the sheet not knowing that was a commander to testify. I'm here just to observe.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we go to the next item, at this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the passing of Hugh Moon, who was a area director of Smokey Mountain. So I'd like for us to have a few moments of silence in there. Okay. At this time, I'd like to call on Karen J. Cowherd, making sounds a little about Mr. Moon. Most of you knew Mr. Moon or knew about Mr. Moon, but Jay Markham, I think he was the second area director we had at Smokey Mountain.
Hugh was the second one, Bill Monroe was the first one. Hugh was also my high school principal, and we called him Colonel, because he had retired from the service as a colonel. And he was a tough old bird, but he was fair, he was straight, he was good. He really cared for his high school students, and when he came to work for Smokey, he cared for the people that Smokey served. He began working in 1974 for Smokey as a consultation and education director. And he had various posts. I remember at one time, when we were into providing services, he had another function having to do with substance abuse services. And he worked there until 1981 in some form or fashion, and became area director at that time. So in 1981, he became second director and worked in that position until his retirement in 1996. He was a fantastic person to work for. He hired me as one of my very first institutional clients, Smokey Mountain Area Mental Health, is what we called it then. And he was fair, scrupulously fair. He was concerned, he was dedicated. He's the type of guy that you can just point to and say, "That's a good man," right there. So it was good to have someone in charge of this organization of that caliber for that long. And he cared very passionately about the foundation they set up, which eventually became Evergreen. And he continued to serve in mental health by being on the board of Evergreen Foundation. And I think that when we finally settled that case, he was very, very relieved that we were done with all the strife and hardship. He made some gestures towards Smokey that showed that he had forgiven Smokey for any bad things that Smokey did before he was doing bad things. One of the things he did was he showed up at Lisa Smokey's retirement and actually made some statements about Lisa, and he got hired as Lisa. And Hugh had struggled with cancer for a long time, probably the past six or eight years he'd been battling cancer. And he finally succumbed to it, but Hugh's a good, honorable gentleman to the end, and I certainly miss him. We've arranged to send some flowers and cards to Melton Funeral Home, which is handling the services. Don't know any details about that, they've handled with Melton Funeral Home's act room. So their website will have the details if you're interested in attending Melton Funeral. So I will miss Colonel.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at the agenda? If so, is there a motion to approve the agenda presented? Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Next item is approval of the par-reading minutes, Mr. Meeting Minutes from December. Anyone have a chance to review the minutes?
Right. Just a note that the minutes that were emailed to you can hand in the day air, that one of our board members who wishes to remain anonymous was caught and called jail and said it should be 2015, not 2014. So that has been corrected in the minutes that you have in front of you.
Thank you. Hearing that, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
So we've got a motion, is there a second? If all second. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Minutes are approved. Okay, next is the Consumer and Family Advisory Committee Report. Patty's going to do that, or someone? Can you hear me?
I'd be happy to do that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We're at Regional CPACs in each individual region met in December, and we're meeting again this month. Everybody has met already this month except for the meeting that will be in Asheville, it will be Monday night. During the meeting in December, we had a presentation on the Project 356, the Buckham Comprehensive Center. And then in our meeting this month, we were talking about, we've been updated on the ADAC proposal. Also, findings have been shared about the North Carolina Stakehold Engagement, Cross Disability Group Initiative. And at some point, we'd like the board to endorse that as well. Smokey Central Region has already voted to endorse that. The state CPACs are endorsing that. And for those of you wanting to know more about that, you can go to www.ncsege.com. We also held a real good presentation about the Consumer Relations Committee at Smokey. And each of our regional CPACs are hearing reports from the reps on the Provider Council, Human Rights Committee, the Innovation Stakeholder Committee, and board reports. And they include agenda items and current projects and work groups and actions taken to any concerns presented. And one of the concerns we talked about was maybe trying to do a little more to provide transportation or to talk about the issues a person's needing transportation to get to CPAC meetings. We have a couple in the central region that are in wheelchairs right now and need a little extra help. But they are appreciative that they can participate, and we're providing reasonable accommodations by telephone, as I am this evening here from home, appreciative, and also that I could participate in this meeting by phone today. Our steering committee met on November the 10th. It will meet again on February the 9th. And some of the items we're working on are the appointment process for the Smokey Mountain CPAC board members to be included in our CPAC bylaws. We are reviewing and revising our bylaws to include CPAC board member responsibilities and appointment processes. And we have established a work group to develop a draft on that. We are finalizing an updated CPAC brochure. We have reviewed and approved the new CPAC meeting schedule, which means we're going to meet more locally and less together as all 23 counties. We still plan to do that twice a year, all 23 counties at least, maybe more as needed. But also, we're working on a relational agreement with the Smokey Mountain Board of Directors. I need to let you know also, there will be a statewide CPAC meeting in Wilton, North Carolina on February the 20th. This was, we talked about this, I was on the local, state to local CPAC conference call last night, and part of it was about planning that. Thank you, I hope you were able to hear me, and I'm glad I was able to participate.
Thank you, Patty. Next item is Provider Advisory Council Report. Call on Duncan Sumter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Provider Advisory Council has been focusing on a couple of things since our last meeting. One is the survey results from Provider Survey for Smokey. We're looking into the remarks and some unfavorable remarks. And the Provider Council has sponsored an additional survey that we are now being working on, to Big Faulkner and to the comments and results that we found, not only with Smokey Mountain Center, but the Provider Council as well. So we have a lot of, looks like we have a lot of room to make some improvement, but we really need to understand why some of those survey results are the way that they work. We'll take them very seriously, and appreciate Christine and Brian's leadership and willing to take part in that so we can make some improvements. The second focus that we have right now relates primarily to integrated care. We have a very active integrated care subcommittee that is working to understand what is integrated care, what is in need in our system, and how we can get there, what are steps that we can take right now versus the law, the important goals of that new board. So we're going to look at provider training and system training for integrated care, what that means and what we can do about it. So I'm real thankful to the subcommittee that we have on that, that did a lot of great work. And that's all that I have to report, unless there are questions.
Thank you. Next item is Legal and Compliance Report. Call on General Counsel, Pressy Hayes.
The first item is that conflict of interest disclosure. This is the time where we would discuss any new conflicts of interest that may have been reported by any board member. There have been no conflicts of interest reported since the last board meeting. The second item is the quarterly compliance report. Since the last compliance report in October, there were three calls made to the compliance hotline. All three of them will refer to the grievance team for resolution as they did not meet criteria for fraud or abuse investigation. There have been no significant compliance issues identified by any oversight agencies since the issues we reported at the last compliance report on the commercial review. EGR and direct site visits are upcoming. In terms of training, we did the compliance training, I recorded that in October, we did that in July. We also did special training for all staff in November staff meetings around privacy and security. So our privacy officer, security officer, and myself did, I think it was about an hour-long presentation to all staff just on the basics of privacy and security and ensuring that we are following HIPAA and going to CFR and practices. Dissemination of compliance information. You know, with 150-plus employees, compliance is more important than ever, and the education and training of staff on compliance issues continues to be a focus for us. We reviewed the 2015 OIG report at compliance committee and at management team. This is the report that the Office of Inspector General puts out every year to identify their priorities for the upcoming year in terms of audits and investigations. We also have incorporated, some of you know, we do a learning moment for staff every Monday, and privacy and security reminders have now been incorporated into those learning moments on at least a monthly basis, just to remind staff of different issues that arise. Exclusion checks. Smokey continues to perform all of the criminal background exclusion and healthcare personal registry checks on all staff providers. Just by way of example, OIG added over 4,000 individuals to the exclusion list last year alone, so this emphasizes why it is so important for Smokey to conduct these checks both when providers sign up to join this Smokey network and on a monthly basis. The significant risks facing the organization continue to be the same, and the security breach, PHI breach, remains our largest risk. Effective in July, the plan is for all outgoing emails to be encrypted, rather than our current process is staff self-select when to encrypt an email, it will now become automatic, there will be, you can opt out, but you don't have to opt in. And I will close on a good note. I am extremely pleased to report that we had no security breaches in calendar year 2014 that required notification to the affected individual. We have to track and report all security breaches to DMA and the Office of Inspector General, I'm sorry, and the Office for Civil Rights. And these breaches are evaluated internally and also by our privacy officer and by DMA's privacy officer to determine if the affected consumer must be notified. We average about 10 potential breaches a month. That's just somebody sending an email that was wrong place, other things like that. But for all of the breaches that we reported, none of them required notification or verification in the newspaper or anything like that. So that was a significant achievement for us. There are a couple of confidential risks that we will discuss in the closed session. And that's it. The bylaws revision, that should have been handed out. Everybody should have a copy of that. Jill, did you have a question?
We can discuss the customs, the background checks. Do you, because of federal funding, just comply with the same federal requirements, do you fingerprint background checks on people who have access to children?
It's interesting, the feds included the fingerprint requirement in the Affordable Care Act, but they haven't finalized the CFR regulations around it. So while it's in the law, they haven't given any guidance on what that process is actually going to look like. But once they finalize those rules, we would be required to comply with the full requirement, but we're not there yet.
Are you, is HR or the vendors, do you have that service in there?
Oh, not that one.
I'm sorry, I'm asking this for selfish reasons.
I understand. Okay, so the bylaws, everybody have a copy of that? Board members? Carolyn, are you here?
Yes.
Jay, Carolyn and I met a couple of months ago to identify some changes to the bylaws. If you will recall, Dr. Heck had requested some language about compliance reporting, which we have started to do. And we added that in here. Changes are in red, so you can see them very clearly. And then we also And then we also wanted to make sure that we were in compliance with respect to how we are selecting our board members for vacancy. We had originally put a lot of very strict timeline requirements for ourselves. We will do things within 30 days and 90 days in terms of filling vacancies, and it has proved to be harder sometimes to fill a vacancy than we originally anticipated, so we wanted to take out some of the very strict 90-day, 30-day type requirements, so you'll see some of that has been taken out. Then the compliance piece, if you'll look on pages nine and 10, we have Article 7, which was ethics and conduct, and we changed that to be ethics and compliance and divided it into two sections. And the first section would be the code of ethics and conduct, and then on page 11, we added compliance and risk reporting. And it just says that we, you know, that the actual compliance issue directed to the Board and that there would be a quarterly compliance report to the Board. So I hope that this addresses any concerns that anyone may have had. Under the bylaws, you have 30 days to look at this, so these are yours to keep, and they can be voted on at the next board meeting.
Do you need to email that to the Board?
Absolutely. And then I think Jay had something you could add.
Yeah, I just wanted to let the board members know that our bylaws, in keeping with the general statute requirement, this board meets at least six times a year. The statute that is passed by the General Assembly says the area board shall meet at least six times per year, and also the finance committee shall meet at least six times per year. So if you're wondering why we meet so often, we have to meet six times a year at least, so just off the top of my head.
I just wonder about the value of the minutes, if we can, I guess, of the time and conflict of interest that she references so frequently, but does something of public perception and a defamation maybe there is?
That's, there is actually a board policy on conflict of interest, and so we can discuss that executive committee at your retreat next month. Generally, what we do, there are four or five policies that have to be approved by the Board, and that's one of them. And so that policy will come to you for annual review at the retreat, so we can certainly discuss, and it does give recognition of conflict of interest.
And I remember that actually included in the bylaws, since she referenced who can or can't buy it based on the actual conflict. But I mean, that's a good discussion for the retreat.
Any other questions?
Pressy, could you make a, explain about the process a little bit more about nominated meeting, since we have two vacancies, you have a vacancy and another one?
Sure. As you know, the General Assembly changes to how only boards are appointed significant changes, and the statute is not the most well-written piece of legislation out there. So what we've done in our bylaws is really attempt to comply with the statute as best we can. One of the things that the statute specifically says, I'll think I have it up here, was that we have to ensure the participation of our constituent counties in appointing board members to vacancies or new appointments. But it does not at all describe how we ensure their participation or what that is supposed to look like. So what we did in these bylaws, when they were originally drafted and continues to be in here, is that we're ensuring that participation through our County Commissioner Advisory Board, which does have a county commissioner from each of the constituent counties on that board. So part of the process is to solicit input from the County Commissioner Advisory Board. We do have two vacancies currently. Ed retired, obviously, so that seat is vacant, and then Carl will be retiring as campaign manager, and his seat will become vacant. So we are looking into filling those two seats, and so the process will be the nominated committee, or actually, any member of the Board can suggest nominations, but the nominated committee carries a recommendation, and that recommendation will go to the County Commissioner Advisory Board to solicit their input before coming back to the full board for it. Is that what we want?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the County Commissioner Advisory Report for the Board, and let's call on Shelley for them.
And it's a bit planned up, being here tonight, and we've had some last minute planned changes. So as you know, we've had some changes on the County Commissioner Advisory Council due to elections in November. We now have nearly 100% of the representation of our next year's board members or Board Advisory Council members. We have a couple counties we're still waiting on, so for that small group of people that would be new, I'll be doing orientation with them until they come on for our first meeting in February. At our next meeting, one of the things we'll be looking at is some of the things basically we discussed, or the relationship between our Board and how Board makes appointments and how they have the input. We also will be talking with them about our direction, a little bit about what the state is doing around accountable care, work in stations, the direction the state is taking in integrated care, how we will be involved with mission and other partners in moving forward in our vision. So I think you'll see maybe same faces as last year, but I have a few more examples of advisory council members.
Any questions, Shelley? Thank you. Our next item is the Board of Compliance Committee, calling Amy Tyler.
Our financial committee met this afternoon, and we went over the financial reports as far as Smokey, and I'll turn it up a bit.
I will torture you with every little line, but I will look through some of the highlights. On cash checking and the debt trust account, it's $77.4 million dollars there. The risk reserve is now up to $14.9 million. We have invested in the North Carolina Capital Management Trust for $13.7, $13.8. Our accounts receivable on the Medicaid side is now at $500,000. That is a net figure, that is net 50%, so the actual accounts receivable is at $10 million now. At the end of the report, I think I have some good news, not some good, but as of the November 30th statement, part of my dollars is in. Accounts payable going down the balance sheet under liabilities is at $12.7. That is an increase over the prior month, part of that is there was one less check write that was done in the month of November, so that will be paid out in the following month, as due to the holidays. Accounts payable on the INR is at, the number side is at 16, let's call that $17 million dollars on average. Current year Medicaid, as far as revenue over expense, it stands at $14, at $4 million dollars years-to-date, under other sources of funds, that is at 5.1. So that covers the high levels in the balance sheet. Are there any questions in regards to?
Ken Dill is the board chairman. How confident do you feel in this effort, and how does that track with actual requirements that you see coming?
I feel confident within 99%, and that's the reason. We actually check with history, the projections that are dominant with the INR, and you'd be shocked to see how on target it actually is. It's based on a projection, literally speaking, service by service, historically what has been a rate collection within a 30-day period, within a 60-day period, within a 90-day period for that individual's service. So it's literally tracked by each service line, and is calculated separately by each service line, dependent upon history. So I feel very confident in this calculation. It's gone through multiple reviews as far as the order is concerned, and they have confidence with the approach.
Well, is that ready to take you?
Well, we have worked at that direction lately. Might want to just give a kind of layman's explanation of what INR stands for, when it represents. When it was not reported, meaning within a 30-day period, we know services have been provided, but we don't have a deal in hand. But from an accounting point of view, it is an expense that we had as an organization incurred, so you have to project what you think out there exists in times that I don't have in hand. So what I know is, this is the month of January, I have a projection for what the INR is in December. In February, March, April, what's in the month of December will be confirmed. So my projection that I base on today, I can actually check on the accuracy, I'll bet several months down. You're important when you're in the business we are.
I'll ask the next question.
Before you announce, if I have any accounts receivable, how many days are they on? If I was to convert it to cash basis, when you're told, and if it's 60 days, where is it not receivable? No, it would accounts for about three and a half to four days of activity. In other words, the rate that you spend in cash. The days in the count. Look for the days in accounts receivable, not the days in cash on hand. Oh, you're talking about A-CHAM? Yeah. That goes back, quite frankly, to give you a report, we would make you dizzy, some of those are as long as 18-month old, many of them are, and a couple of them would be for three to eight months. This is, you know, basically, if you catch up, this is a different problem than typically you'd see with an AR. I mean, it has to do with NC tracks and a lot of the problems that we've had with being able to reconcile our member months with our payments, basically, and it's a deep variable. Unless there are additional questions, I'll go to revenue and expenditures on a detailed basis. The yellow sheet, and I'll go through comp, go through Medicaid side, and then I'll go to the state and local and federal, and finally with the summer. On the service end is Medicaid, this is what we spend on actual services year-to-date beginning of November. The revenue is at $106.4 million dollars. Our expenditures were at $104.7, so our revenue versus expense for the period is at $1.64 million. On the administrative side, our revenue is at $14.4, our expenditure is at 12, so our revenue over expenditures on the Medicaid side were at $2.4. So overall, year-to-date, our revenue versus expense on the Medicaid side is at $4 million dollars. During that period of time, our risk reserve that we have to set aside is at $2.4 million for that period, that from July 1st through November 3rd. On the state and federal side, going through the column with the second boxes, service revenue is at $23.8 million, service expense at $20.2, so revenue versus expense is at $3.6. On the administrative side, the revenue is at $2.3, our expenditures were at $2.5. Yes, indeed, we experienced a loss on the administrative services side on state and federal, it was at $175,000 for that period on July 1st through November 3rd. Overall, state and federal, revenue versus expense at $3.4. Going to the total column, overall exit revenue, then on total service expense, total service revenue, meaning combining Medicaid, state, and federal, comes to $133.4 million dollars on the revenue side, $126.8 on the expenditure side with the revenue versus expense, so a positive balance of $6.5. On the administrative side, revenue is $17.1, expenditures at $14.5, so a revenue versus expense of $2.6 million dollars. So for the entire period, we ran a quote surplus, so revenue versus expense of $9.1 million dollars for the period. The next sheet is our Medicaid budget versus actual. This is by service, some services are high, some services are low. This is to be expected. There are areas of concern, service management and the executive leadership team have been following and have plans and actions to address. So the highest areas of concern, which we will see in a very fact, sort of stick out, is long-term care, residential services, inpatient services, and certainly TRTF, which has to do with residential permanent maintenance. Also sticking out is innovations. This permanent issue can reference to innovations. Our overall expenses for this service is higher than our PDM or support, and that's certainly an issue that we have with the division of medical systems as we proceed to the year. However, overall, we do have a positive balance for the period. The swings of these numbers will be somewhat lessened by recognition of some revenue, which I will refer to later on. Obviously speaking, we're now in the middle of the year. Our number of enrollings within our area has increased during that period of time over what we originally budgeted for, which has a positive effect on our revenue balance, that our revenue is actually greater than what we were budgeting for. I won't go through all of the dashboards, I will just go through a few of them. The expense ratio, this is talking about expenses over revenue, and just what that ratio looks like. On the Medicaid side is a good balance, meaning that we didn't spend more than what we received, which is always good. On the state and federal side is actually below than what we would expect. There have been commitments made for the state and federal ones that we've received, however, expenditures have always meet commitments that look on measures of something that actively addresses, but that shows why the rebound is actually below right now. Going to the dashboard that's farther than Medicaid, current ratio, the current ratio of assets over current liabilities, just on the Medicaid piece, so that's at 2.2. In other words, we have assets at a factor of 2.2 over what our liabilities have to do, which is we've moved out, we always have a minimum one of an alert that David makes us on, is anything that's below one for three consecutive months, and we don't have people knocking on doors. Total current ratio, we added all funding sources, is at 3.27, which is quite good. I will leave the dashboard at that unless there are certain areas of question or concern. Obviously, in terms of tempers, with A, I'm raised concern with the accounts receivable and the ASC category of A, has that affected that category of A in the middle of the year? And that may be a case which we are trying to address with colleagues and the unions. Periodically, I'm supporting, so staff will approach both the compliance committee and the Board in reference to budget revision, so this is the second one for this particular school period. I'm looking at the green sheet now. I will try to go through them fairly quickly, stop me if I'm going too fast, and if I'm not going fast enough, tell me. So literally speaking, I will go line by line, and it is something that the Board as a whole has to prove as a revision. The first row, and I'm looking at the second column, it's high bill budget revision, January 22nd, 2015. I guess it's a 14, 4500 increase as far as the county match. These are MOA months, we had a discommunications with the college in Nash County. The first revision, and it's produced a process, had a decrease of 4500, they said no, we're not decreasing it, it will be at the same level as FY14, which was at $189,566, so this replaces that 4500 that we had to pack this in. ABC funds, very difficult to project, sometimes you don't know what the fund you're actually going to be in terms of the course of the year. We have one new county that has contributed, and that's in the amount of $10,000, so we project the dollars of the year, and that's in Brooks County, so that reflects $10,000 of the 16. reflects ten thousand of the fifteen thousand listed, and we projected an increase from Commonwealth County of five thousand four, a total increase of fifteen under that category. We did not project an increase in Medicaid pass-through, literally speaking, is where we act as an administrative agent for D M A and work with the union as a provider of care. So what was added, since people informed that we were going to do that, was a two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand in past due funds. Forty-eight thousand has increased for transition to community living. This is a DOJ consumer-related line, where consumers are entitled to two thousand dollars in funds as far as their adjustment to community living, so the projection here is twenty-four we added to the original month, so that reflects the four eighty-two thousand total. We have moved because of the rich field group that's being planned, cash that the board had approved from the front balance into operating. So approximately two point three million dollars is reflected in multiple lines for a move from the front balance, plus of all the costs in the move. Of that, two point three six eight, sixty-eight thousand reflects the move rich community health desolated funds, which is a forty-month contract, and this reflects the payment for just FY fifteen of that four point three. Hundred and fourteen thousand increased in Medicaid administrative revenue. Twenty-one thousand for an increase in the risk reserve revenue, for a total of nine-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand thousand increase in Medicaid service revenue to be received. This reflects the increase in the number of enrollees, Medicaid enrollees within our twenty-three county area, and what revenue that increased over what we had originally budgeted reflects, which has to be rolled into the budget. Those divisions between the risk reserve and administration are as per D M A's approved percentage on town debt's growth from that. Seventy-five thousand dollars was increased to single stream funds, this is specifically for the traumatic brain injury funds, which we recorded post the beginning of this period. Hundred and eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars increase in state non-Madecade UCR. This is short-term assistance to individuals living in group homes and some of these catchment areas. Others know this as the bridge fund, sometimes labeled that. Hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, thereabouts, in non-UCR child S A, which is substance abuse prevention funds. Before, at the beginning of fiscal year, we received a reduction of two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, thereabouts, in substance abuse prevention funds. This was a one-time partial restoration of hundred and twenty-six thousand for prevention Notice I said one time, so we're not to see it again. Forty-nine thousand, just under fifty, increased in federal amounts, we saw at C R prior year payments. There was a curiosity in reference to the earnings of component services being provided over this period, that's split into an accident, this reflects that, this is a full adjustment. So those total budget revisions add some total to four point one four seven million dollars, that is added to the budget per revision one, is reflection of the two. There is a requirement under statute that all budget changes go into those major service lines, expenditure lines that we've seen, it defines personal services, live materials, current obligations, fixed charters, capital pathways, and total contracts and grants. So my delineation by line is forced into those categories, and this, these are totals that are reflected as per those categories. All right.
Chairman, we will now head.
Mr. Chairman, it is the caucus of the Finance Committee to approve these budget amendments.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second? Second, is there any questions, any comments?
I would like to make one comment here. The budget amendment in front of review by the Finance Committee, thorough, and the amount of the budget amendment number two is four million one forty-seven eight fifty-two, which gives us a total projected budget for fifty-fourteen fifteen, three hundred and two four million nine hundred and seventy-two, seventy-seven four. Those numbers probably need to be recorded in a minute.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any more questions, comments? All that favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Repose. Thank you.
One additional item, I'd definitely be able to report, constantly moving in reference to the AR issue, the accounts receivable issue that we are owed. As a result of the technical meeting, and there have been many, the last one, about seven hundred thousand client months of recognition by D M A that were missed statewide, that we are to be reversed in the February cycle. Do I know by category of A which ones those are? Haven't looked. Do I know how much of what we have owed is in that number? I don't know until I actually do it in the year. But this is the first significant flow of changes in that condition of some difficulties that we have without D M A departments. In addition to that, they've come up with over six hundred and fifty thousand records that they recognize that they were errors, that they will correct, starting with one in W R. Again, I do not know the financial impact of that recognition, or necessarily how they will be distributed, and will be following them.
Thank you. Okay, our next ILO is the Performance and Quality Committee report. Carl, will you give that?
I'd like to do it faster, but I'm losing clarity.
Okay. Thank you for calling the connect. We reviewed the monthly DHHS report, smoking ban standards for the month of December. We reviewed the October LME MCO comparison. This is data that the state gives back to us from our monthly report on certain measures, and they give us every LME MCOs. We fare pretty well. Our something of significance is that we have the highest or second highest penetration rates for state-funded and Medicaid services. That means per one thousand individuals in our catchment area, we serve more people with our money than do other LME MCOs, and I think that's something that the board can be proud of in terms of the work of smoking ban providers.
I think, just to put that in context, and this is more, just a factual statement in one value, you know, we do that despite the fact that we have the lowest county contribution rate of any LME MCO in the state, or one-third of the state average. So, the fact that we do what we do, well, one way to look at it.
I feel the lady is sweating over here.
The fact that we, you know, have that degree of access is, you know, a small accomplishment I can get, and it goes to our number of development principles that often are upsetting to folks, but at the end of the day, when it comes to access for those that have no ability to receive care anywhere else, hopefully it's improved.
We also reviewed the quarterly reports of the investigation oversight report for the second quarter of fiscal year fourteen fifteen, the I D B dashboard for the second quarter of fiscal year fourteen fifteen, and the backup staffing report for the second quarter of fiscal year fourteen fifteen. And finally, we notified the Performance and Quality Committee of the external quality review that is to take place next week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. The Carolina Center for Medical Excellence is coming to review our functions in many of our departments, and you will have a preliminary report out on that next month. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Chairman, a couple of comments came out there, and we gave really timely. One is, somewhat of what's spoken is we're a financing and coordinating agency for providers to actually provide service on the ground. It's tough to just have reports and numbers to reflect how much of what we said is so true, that how much of the need and the resource that available, a lot of the food strategy for the staffs and employees effectively, without, and with some controversy, one of the conference provider network, but it has, it is a category based on numbers that aren't being seen. But it's tough, the other thing is, so many of the numbers reflect these aggregate figures, and it's easy to forget what we're doing in terms of effectiveness, and it's hard to say, yes, on the one hand, it's all been looking good, but for those who have a tough life, and it's not working for them in particular, there are appeals processes, and every in the subject, we hear complaints, both locally and maybe here towards us, but the reality is for a lot of individuals, there are appeals processes, they're not easy, but what's interesting is that more than others, there are also staff opinion processes, and the staff will relook at what they're doing, and one of the numbers we see is the staff actually overturns the stuff occasionally, and it's an impressive system that the staff that the employees have. Is it perfect? Does it work for everybody? No, but there are systems in place to make it work, and we had a good discussion about that, and we also, the other thing we talked, that brings up, just brings up, is these numbers about made in business, because that's one of the ultimate ways, you know, with providers, with funding provided, is actually systems work, and the more we keep those numbers down, the better. So, we try and take the numbers that makes you possess that, you know, not really we succeed, but we have a good discussion about it.
Thank you. Next item is the Report of the Chair and Board Directors. The Executive Committee report, the Executive Committee met earlier today, we discussed the number of items, we discussed the rich field project, which Brian's going to forelot in a few minutes. We also talked about the status of the county commissioner's advisory board and board membership, and you heard some of those comments earlier from our attorney and also from Shelley. And discussion about the upcoming retreat, which in February, we have our retreat planned for February twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, and it's going to be here at the Doubletree, and there'll be more information coming to each member, one of you about that, it's very important for the board members to make it. It's usually a Friday evening and then Saturday, so please, have your calendars in mark from February twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. Okay, at this time, I call Brian to give us the chief executive office report.
Okay. Thank you. The situation with mobile crisis, just to kind of recap, back November, December, when we began hearing rumblings from D M A that they're going to change the ability for mobile crisis to be provided in hospital emergency departments, because they had determined that it resulted in an opportunity for dual payments to be made. And there's a lot of concern about how this would affect many hospitals, and we have twenty-two hospitals now in our catchment area, and probably about a third of them, I think Jenny has evaluated this for us, where it would have, you know, some degree of impact from, you know, really big to, you know, some degree of problem, as you say, because there's a great reliance on the staff, the mobile crisis staff, being, you know, a tremendous resource to the hospital emergency departments that otherwise really don't have the personnel, staffing to be able to address individuals who are experiencing, as we say, behavioral health and mental health or substance-related crisis. So without mobile crisis being able to be there, and indeed, what are these hospitals going to do? It's no small problem for those that would be affected, and I always have to mention, you know, Mike Stevenson out of Murphy Medical, I think they're probably one that would, you know, be greatly impacted by this, and Mike and I have continued to have dialogue about this. So, we had some discussion with D M A around the impact that this would represent, and they kind of came out of a position where, as of January first, mobile crisis would no longer be billable service in the E D, and as a result of a lot of pushback on that, decided that, yeah, we better take the can down the road a little bit. Actually, I forgot, until March, March first, essentially delayed that until March first to give more time for everybody to prepare for an alternate way to address this. Now, how's that going to work out for those hospitals that are significant and affected? They really have two choices. They can choose to employ any range of individuals, social workers, psychiatrists, psychiatric and nurse practitioners, a range of professionals, in the E D that could properly meet the needs of individuals in the E D experiencing this crisis, or they could purchase it. And of course, it's how medicine, you know, in emergency departments is practiced, there's a lot of employees, contract employees. What would be most logical in the case of contractual service would be for them to, for example, Appalachian, Murphy Medical could contract directly with Appalachian for that service to be provided in the E D. We have requested, I know I did in particular, probably, I think a couple of months ago, clarity around what exactly would be billable, what was still debillable from the perspective of medicking in the E D to avoid this pool billing calamity that they seem to have discovered. We've yet to get clarity around that. I know there's been some pretty significant rumblings from the hospital association. I spoke with the technical secretary last week about trying to help them work through this problem. There is no simple solution, it's a problem, but it's not going to be a great solution to, the MCOs are responsible for presenting back to DHHS essentially how this is going to be worked out in all of our communities, so we're having to facilitate that, if we really can't offer a solution other than really what I've stated. So, we'll continue to keep you posted on that if you hear concerns about that, and that's the story, I don't expect there to be any changes, there's always, you know, the last-minute hope that there's going to be another, kick the can down the road, I don't think that'll happen. Is there going to be some additional service definition? That isn't going to help because it still has to do with Medicaid, a lot of the things that people are used to seeing at the last minute, aren't going to be remedies for this, and it's going to be a very serious problem, you know, given for some of these hospitals, so we'll keep you posted on that.
Brian, for these, are hospitals in a position when, and I assume these are people who voluntarily go to the hospital, and show the emergency, the majority of them, and my follow-up question is really self-interested, are the hospitals able then to call a deputy and put it in the justice system rather than the emergency system? Because that is because of the burden of cost.
Well, we're kind of, and this is a very easy thing to do, you're kind of blending the things that happen to individuals in those situations, and many times, there's involuntary commitment.
A burden of obligation, yeah.
Right. So the extent to which an individual is voluntarily presenting So the extent to which an individual is voluntarily presenting there, in, in some cases, yes, in some cases, it is a matter of having a review of that commitment done, and in fact, the, the individual technically is in, in the custody of law enforcement, which gets into a whole bunch of issues around risk management for hospitals and, and all that. So, can law enforcement offer the intervention that an individual needs in that situation? No, they can't.
That's what I would want, and obviously microchips could be diverted of us. We're in the wrong place compared to go to this place.
Yeah, yeah. It just, it really has to do with the way the laws are written in North Carolina. I think there's a lot of room for improvement with that. But once and again, you have to remember, due to intala, which I forget what words represent those, that abbreviation of intala, we all just refer to as intala. When a person is admitted into the ED, they're, they're, the hospital has, and there's a lot of, you know, very good reasons why hospitals can't simply discharge individuals. You know, people can leave against medical advice, but, you know, once that person is there, they're, they're there. It's, it's a combination, and it's really a very difficult situation. There, there's so many different groups that have a responsibility in these situations where it's law enforcement, it's the hospital, and, and a lot of laws that don't necessarily, I think, interact in a positive fashion for people, which is a perfect segue into one of our next categories. Yes, Mark?
The burden we see is for an invol, or a person to be involuntarily, and then transitions to involuntary. Because when involuntary, they don't need a law enforcement to be by standby. So the doctor, distal, employee, the transition to that involuntary, but if that's what it's worth, we have to actually have an opposite.
You're right. That's another feature with unfortunately, how this problem can kind of escalate. Sometimes it involves transportation, sometimes it involves the ability to be admitted to one hospital or another. It, it's a, it's a, and I'll tell you, the first thing we need to remember when we talk about this for day, this is a really unpleasant, this, this is not a good experience. This is not where we want care to be rendered to an individual. It's as if a, a pathway has been so deep into the ED that if you had have told me eleven years ago when I came to North Carolina, I was aghast of this, okay? I'd never experienced anything quite like this, and I thought, just when I said, Pete and I, I thought, well, we're just going to change this. Well, I, I have not been successful. And it hasn't been for lack of trying, but again, I want to remind everybody, it's difficult and bad, we complain about this, hospitals don't like to go on for, for those people, this is, we are not doing a good job. So, for us to be able to hear the fantastic news, we're going to shift this around now, Mark. We talked about a really great thing, the news that we were funded through the Crisis Services Initiative, and I'm guessing people are generally familiar with that, will have tongue-in-cheek how the state sort of discovered this problem that we've been experiencing for a long time, and I wish I could say it's new money, but kind of moved some money around, drew a lot of attention, and offered grants essentially, and LME MCOs had to be the applicants. There were four in the state, and we were selected, and we just learned of that, it's this last week, for what is just a tremendous project that we're putting together at three fifty-six Biltmore, our administrative offices that we're moving out of, there's just so many things that happened. We committed to move out of there, realizing that it would provide such greater service to the community as a treatment center. So what are we going to have? We're going to have, you know, under one roof, a whole collection of services from outpatient walk-in, crisis, kinds of treatment services, peer services, mobile crisis, pharmacy, and a sixteen-bed facility-based crisis program. So under one roof, you know, we'll just have a tremendous offering where we can really, I, I hope, and I really believe in turn this, where that can be the funnel instead of the mission ED.
Is smoking provided?
Pardon me?
Is smoking provided?
No, no. And again, and remember, we're a payer, not a service delivery group, and there's even another part to this, and a lot of good news to talk about with this. RHA will be the provider, and it's really a consolidation of a lot of their services, both moving from existing facility or down the road, there's Neil Davenport Center, facility-based crisis will be relocated there, and again, their outpatient services will be consolidated there. I think the peer stuff is going to be done by RHA, and then IMI also will have a presence there. Pharmacy is AB, okay, which stands for?
National Bank.
Right. And they've been around a long time. What were you getting out, Manny?
Well, I think you said before, maybe outpatient services individual, who, across offering disabilities, so it's just really a seamless place where you could come in if you're in crisis, but you could just present because you're in need of help, so it's really a whole range of service. But the twenty-three-hour chairs is a new thing I want to talk about, maybe, that will help your community.
Please do.
So Ryan, as Ryan referenced, facility-based crisis, which is a service we know about, which is a service that a person can be admitted to, to stay for several days until they can be stabilized and moved to the next level of care that's most appropriate for them. We didn't really have anything that kind of stepped down from that. You could come in in crisis and be seen, but you would have to go back home, or you would have to go, you couldn't go back home. You'd have to go to facility-based crisis or to condition care. The behavioral health urgent care that's open twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, has within it the capability of having some observation chairs, and there will be eight of these, and these are, they're, they're kind of, are going on your chairs. It's not a bed, it's a comfortable chair. It's a place that you can stay for up to twenty-three hours while you give the support, the assessment, the crisis stabilization that you need, and then maybe at twenty-two and a half hours or twenty-three hours, you can go on home and come back the next morning to re-engage in, in developing your treatment plan. Now, there's some question about, oh, my goodness, what if it's twenty-three hours? And then what? Would you have to go on over to mission if all of the facility-based crisis beds were filled? And there is a potential, which we're working on for a waiver, that would allow a person to be able to stay to the twenty-fourth hour and the twenty-fifth hour, if that's what it took to really have them safe enough to go back safe. But this is a service we don't have anywhere in Western Virginia right now, and so it's a brand-new service. It also needs a brand-new service definition and a funding stream, which we're working on very quickly, so it has sustainability.
Yeah, and, and I guess to say service, it, it technically is not a, it's, it's an offering, I guess we could say. So it just makes so much sense for people to, you know.
It, it is being provided at other locations in the state, and we do have experience with it, and we find it really effective intervention.
So is this going to be in lieu of a person going to the emergency room, that will go here first? Is it in the nears that we're talking about?
It is all about ED diversion and catalog.
So is it, that's my question, is it available to all twenty-three counties of Smokey to have people take in here and then be checked?
You know, the design is for Smokey and surrounding counties, but the fact is right now that already Neil Davenport is serving people from way out west and neighboring counties. So, yes, it's a regional resource center.
Now, this is, you will take seventy-three ED involtaries that are in custody.
It will be ED voluntary commitment as a day aside, yes, with, with security and the support that is needed to be successfully informed.
This is a, yeah, tremendously proud of, you know, our ability to kind of muster all this, and I got to go on, there's a lot of things you need to worry and you need to say, and it's terrible that Nini left. You know, she was a pillar with this. I think Volcom County is in for the eight hundred thousand. Initiative Health, you could get around eight hundred thousand, maybe when you look at our, you know, you could say, if we had moved, which is going to cost us, you know, over two million dollars, I mean, you see what these things cost. Everybody says, well, why aren't there more of these? Well, because they're really expensive, okay? And the collaboration to do this, I, you know, certainly since I've been here, I don't know that I've experienced something on this level, it's just been tremendous. And Jenny deserves an unbelievable, let me tell you a story, and I can't say who, let's see, there is more than one deputy secretary, so you won't know who I'm referring to, but they did tell me, they said, you know, I've had been saying publicly about this, but, you know, your application was head and shoulders of everybody else's. You know, all the staff are just like, over the top of what you're doing, it's the vision, it's the business, the path, and Jane, you know, was really the driving force on putting this together, you know, and then, what did you risk, signaling someone out? It, it wouldn't have happened without them. So, thank you, George.
So, remind in addition, and I think it's, pardon Julie again, so, we should be able to, we should be able to track admissions, expenditures, readmissions, I mean, that's, that's how we're going to be able to determine whether there's a sustainable funding, right? It should make a difference. And I'm assuming that, I mean, is there anything else that you consider looking at that would, that would be a sharper instrument determining whether the effectiveness of the program?
Other than hospital patient admissions?
Yeah, I mean, expenditures also, of course.
Would we have set of metrics in the proposal, and certainly we can build all those, but I think another thing to look at is just service engagement at seven days, service engagement at thirty days. I mean, the idea is, as the person comes in, you make them feel loved, you make them feel safe, you give them hope, you get them in to a treatment plan, and you keep them engaged so we don't have them back in ED or back in crisis, in case of, so service engagement is a, is a big thing.
Just, there's so many pieces, I mean, I've just, it's almost been like a hobby of mine, since I came to North Carolina, trying to just figure out a better way to do this. What do you have to do, what you have to divert to begin with? You have to get ahead of this. And then for those individuals who, you know, ended up in, in that, you know, the continuity of care and just start planning, I mean, if you're just doing this with the person being there, you're getting a ton of bad, you know, that person comes in with a whole bunch of problems, a whole lot of things wrong, and if you just, you know, stitch them up and give them an antitoxication, I mean, you know, it's a tough game. And these are people that are tremendous level and need for all kinds of things. If we don't deal with that, we're not, you know, it's just a revolving door, a very, very expensive door. So, you know, this gives a great opportunity to get ahead of it, and I told you, there's even more good in it, would you believe it? So, we have Neil Davenport Center, which is the existing facility-based crisis facility that RHA operates, and they operate at ninety-five percent utilization. It's almost impossible because, you know, sort of the bed in the head, I mean, they're full constantly. So all of those beds are moving over here to this three fifty-six as soon as we can move out of there. I mean, we're literally the, probably the day we start moving out, the plans for the renovation, we're even staging us moving out so that they can tackle the most difficult places to renovate first, is how much coordination there is with this. We're like going with all of this. So, facility-based crisis, Neil Davenport said, wow, we get this other building out of town that the county owns, and I think we're about, you know, of course, it's going out to the world, compliments of Jerry, I, I would say we're about ninety-nine percent there that what we're going to do is turn that into a facility-based crisis program for you, which again, I mean, if you did that, it'd be, you know, there'd be a ticker-take parade, I mean, that's, that's a huge thing to do. You know, it's a new service definition, a huge identity, I mean, if I get involved with a bad situation, you know, in ED, if, if that person has, you know, incredibly medically involved in psychiatric stuff, you know, they're there for, you know, a month or it's a kid, because there's so little resource inpatient, or really high-level resource for kids, so having this facility, I mean, it, this, this is huge. You know, we're just about at a place, I think, where we could talk about the provider we're going to work with for that, and, I mean, have both of these as part of one project? I mean, that's, you don't get this. You don't get one, usually. I mean, effectively, we got two is, is off the charts. And by the way, we're going to be doing another facility-based crisis in Caldwell, very about the same, probably the opening very about the same time. I mean, you, you, you know, it's amazing. And these, these are the things that are needed to really make a difference, you know? I mean, unless something changes in, in this whole pattern, nothing's going to make a difference, so we're doing the things to change, so. And then involves the Ridgefield piece, we're on target with that, it's about the third week of February, should take us about a month to get fully moved out, and as we're moving out, the people will be coming in to do the renovations there so that, you know, we can just be aggressive with Caldwell. Tremendous thanks to, to Mission Health and great partners with this, you know, Volcom County, you know, our friends in Waukegan, the HHS that write some checks, so it's a very, very, very proud time for us. That's my story, I'm sticking with it.
Huh? So, ready for the next one?
Well, it's already at six, long as we're in, since we don't probably have much of a closed session, just go ahead and knock it out. What?
Finish the, for the, for the current.
Okay. All right. We have a, yeah. Close session, percentage of North Carolina in the second, one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, page one, order to present, disclose the information that is clearly confidential pursuant to North Carolina statute one twenty-two Cs through one twenty, one twenty-six point one, or not considered a public record within the meaning of chapter one thirty-two of the statute, and to consult the attorneys pursuant to North Carolina statute one forty-three through, through three eighteen, eleven, page, is there a motion for a close session? Certainly, is there a second? Okay, all members want to close this and say aye? Okay, you're good? Okay, uh, agenda item N is the postponement until the retreat. Uh, agenda item O is the consent agenda for human rights, community animal. Is there anything else you can add to the consent agenda? Is that it? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? There's a second, did you hear that? Carl?
I want to, the principal said, and I, I.
All members have approved the consent agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Is there any other business? And just one thing to remind you about, again, the retreat is February twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, it's here at Doubletree, and just, although it seems like a logical, we don't have a board meeting, our board meeting is after retreat, along with our, along with the retreat, so please attend if you can, and again, the Christmas gifts, the board members, if you didn't get them, please take them. So, is there a motion for a German?
Aye.
All members want to have a paper for German? Say aye?
Aye.